Good evening. Whoop, let me get the microphone up here so you can hear me. Welcome to the evening of the -- what's the date today? Do you have this on here? I don't think you do.
October 20th.
The 20th, thank you. October 20th. We have a special meeting agenda, an executive session, a work session, a meeting following the special meeting. And all of us are at the dais. Thank you for all being here this evening. I know it was difficult for you. But before we begin, I'm going to make an announcement. I'm going to tell you that we are now great-grandparents.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, yay!
I got my girl.
Oh, good.
Seven pounds, five ounces. Wesleyan Theresa Stewart, born on October 18th at 10:47 PM.
Yay!
Okay, now we'll go. All right. Now is the time for citizens, since this citizen just made her own announcement, would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. All right, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Is there anybody that just happens to be here that would like to speak tonight? All right, well, we're going to go on to 4.1. I would like a motion and a second. Oh, excuse me, before, has everybody joined?
Wally's trying.
Counsel? Sorry, I should...
No, I'm not joined, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we're in a new system and it's all electronic and I should've said...
It's connecting.
...to remind you. Has everybody got the screen on your big screen? Got it? Hello, hello over there.
We're good, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
We're good.
All right, let's go on with 4.1. I would like a motion and a second to go in executive session to meet with the city eternal attorney for legal advice and consultation and to consider its position and to provide instruction, direction to the city attorney and the city manager regarding the city's position in connection with contractual negotiations associated with the sale of real estate to the Basis School. And, 4.2, to meet with the city attorney for legal advice and consultation and to consider its position to provide instruction, direction to the city attorney, city manager regarding the city's position in connection with contractual negotiations associated with economic development opportunities. So please, do I hear a motion and a second?
So moved, it's...
They're in.
It's not up there, right?
We did move it. Yeah, I think I've...
I don't have anything on my screen.
I don't have it online either.
Did you hit the motion and second?
So did somebody make a motion?
I moved.
Second.
All right, we're just going to go with it. It's not on the screen. So I heard...
Oh, so now we're going to do it again?
Okay, so let's do it again. Oh, sure, moved by, second by.
Mine's blank.
All right. So we have a motion by Sherri Lortano and a second by Bill Stip. Okay, so please cast your vote. It's not up on the -- is it supposed to be on the little one? It's not on mine. We didn't have this much trouble on the first night.
So is it broken already?
I joined it before.
Mayor, you can just do a verbal.
Okay. All right, so do I need to do a roll call?
Yes.
All right, roll call vote, please. Go to meeting.
One moment. Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
We will now go into executive session. I apologize to the audience, we seem to be having some mechanical problems. But it's up there, but, oh, it's finally there. So the people online looking, you'll...
Have one more chocolate chip cookie.
Are you ready?
Oh, you can. Because I couldn't find mine.
All right, we will now adjourn the executive session. We're convening into the special meeting. So now we will take action to, on 4.5, we will take action, consider taking action on purchase agreement for the sale of 11-acre parcel at the intersection of West Sherman Street and West Goodyear Boulevard. Warwick Massey, city attorney, to present. Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. The item you have in front of you this evening is actually two action items to execute a purchase agreement with Basis Schools, Inc. for the sale of approximately 11 acres of city-owned land in the city center side, well, just adjacent to the city center side, what we call the 100-acre parcel. And I am, it's not very clear, is it? This is a follow-up to the meeting that we occurred on September 9th of this year where we entered a letter of intent to sell this 11-acre site. This followed a site selection process in the West Valley for the Basis Schools to open a kindergarten through 12th grade facility that is a charter school. And the Basis folks are here this evening and will give a short presentation in a few minutes. The purpose of my presentation this evening is just to walk through the terms of the purchase agreement, which are consistent with the letter of intent that was previously executed by the council, and answer any questions that you may have. Referring to the diagram, which is, again, is a little blurry, and I am technologically challenged, I may have to ask Winnet here in a minute to help me focus. Ah, there we go.
That's better.
Stay where you're at. I got this. Rourke's keeping his job. But the site is generally located at, to the northwest corner of Sherman and Goodyear Boulevard, in the 100-acre site. When you previously saw a diagram at the September 9th meeting, the site was more over here, but based upon some engineering concerns with the intersection of Sherman and Goodyear, and with the consent of Basis, and just looking at the site, we moved the 11 acres just a little bit to the west on Sherman. It's just north of Desert Edge High School, which is located in this area. The terms of the purchase agreement is that Basis Schools will purchase 11 acres of city-owned land for the fair market value of that land. We will determine that value based upon an appraisal of the site, that will be a city-retained appraiser. We will begin that appraisal process almost immediately after we go into escrow. The appraiser will be, the appraisal will be based upon the value of the land and the access condition, but will take into account all the improvements as the city will install to serve both this site, to benefit Desert Edge High School, and improvements that'll serve the remainder of our site. Basis was slated to operate a school that's projected to open in August of 2015, so we're under an expedited schedule, both for the construction of the school on Basis Park and for the installation of the necessary off-site city-owned infrastructure that I just referenced that'll benefit both the Basis site and the adjacent land. The purchase price, as we discussed, that will be determined by appraisal. It'll be a 30-year note on the payment of the promissory note. The first 10 years will be interest-only, and 10 years, the next 20 years will be on an amortized schedule. The interest rate was established on September 10th pursuant to the letter of intent that was pegged on the 30-year treasury note at that point. We will go into a 90-day due diligence period. During that time, Basis will be receiving their charter from the state. They will be conducting due diligence on the site and receiving their financing. Based upon that, at any point in the next 90 days, once all those contingencies have been met, we will proceed to close on this sale. There is a 10-year deed restriction that'll be imposed on the site for the next 10 years. It could only be used for educational purposes. After that, it would be subject to the underlying zoning on the site, which is the PAD for the universities, which has the university uses plus some ancillary retail commercial opportunities, should that be needed. But there will be a 10-year deed restriction pursuant to this sale. A part of this sale, the city will proceed with construction of off-site improvements that was previously contained in our CIP project budget. We'll be conducting full site, full street improvements on Goodyear Boulevard, half-street improvements on Goodyear Boulevard South. We'll be conducting a half-street improvement on Sherman Road. We'll be putting in water and sewer lines to serve not only Basis but the adjacent properties as well. That is a city responsibility. We'll be putting in dry utility conduit, but the school would be responsible for the extension of APS and the associated dry utilities of the site. There also needs to be some modifications to the SAT site to accommodate the roadway improvements, so that is also improved, a part of the capital improvement project associated with this site. That is a high-level, a quick review of the purchase agreement. Again, it's consistent with the letter and intent that we entered back in September. There are currently two pieces still outstanding to the purchase agreement that we're working through as we speak. One is the legal descriptions. We're very close, we're making some minor modifications of the legal descriptions. That is an exhibit to the purchase agreement. And we're working through the deed of trust, which is also an exhibit to the purchase agreement. That document won't be entered into until the sale close, which could happen in the next 90 days, but we're tweaking some language in that deed of trust. So what I'd ask on the first item this evening is that the council would consider for approval the execution of a purchase agreement contingent upon the finalization of the deed of trust and the legal descriptions. The second item you have is the fund transfers to fund the capital improvement project for the off-site improvements that I just went through. If you have any follow-up questions on that, I think Larry is probably the better one to ask than I am. Bob Beckley can probably answer any questions as far as the capital improvements above and beyond what I've already referenced, as far as what we're obligated to. And I did fail to mention there's two traffic signals, one at Sherman and Goodyear and the other one at Hestria and Goodyear Boulevard. That's included in the capital improvement projects for the off-site improvements. With that, if you have any questions, I feel free to ask them, I'll answer them at this time. We also have two individuals, or actually three, here from Basis, Jonathan Gilbert and Peter Bezanson, which I knew I was not going to get right, and I apologized before the meeting. They'd like to give you a short presentation on the Basis Schools, if that's appropriate at this time.
Should I wait and let them do that now, or, okay? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and City Council. I'll turn it over to my colleague Jonathan Gelbart, our Director of New School Operations, in a second, but I just wanted to thank you. My name is Peter Bezanson, I'm the CEO of Basis. We opened, gosh, six schools last year in four different states, and so this summer we sat down and said, maybe we should take it, take it easy for a little while. And there was only one campus that never came up for consideration when we thought about taking a couple off the table, and that campus was this, this Goodyear site. We are so committed to this site, we're so excited to serve the demand here. Our strongest interest is here, our longest interest lists are in this area, and we want to be part of kind of an educational revolution out here in the West Valley. So we're excited to be here. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Jonathan to talk a bit more about the specifics of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a brief, roughly five-minute presentation, just to give you a little bit more background on Basis. So, members of the council, Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Pizzillo, thank you so much for having us here tonight and for the opportunity to join you. We're thrilled to be partnering with the city of Goodyear on this, on this project to open our 17th Basis School and provide a free world-class education to students in this part of the valley. We wanted to thank Manager Dahlke and his entire staff, the city staff, for all their support up to this point, which has been really tremendous. Deputy Manager Beckley, Katie Wilkin, Warwick Massey, Harry Paxton, Kim Bradford, Keith Brown, Ramina Hanashow, and many others. And we look forward to continuing to work with them in the coming months. So, so thank you all. I don't have a clicker or anything. Oh, this, this works too. Cool. So what is Basis? Basis is a network of open enrollment, tuition-free, public charter schools. Open enrollment here in Arizona means any student from any school district can attend Basis, and it will not cost them anything. Our mission is to raise the level of American education to match the highest international standards. So our goal is not, not to just offer a world-class education to the students who attend Basis, but to set an example for all schools and raise the level of achievement throughout the country. Where did Basis come from? In 1998, Doctors Michael and Olga Block, who are both economists, were living in Tucson and were looking for a high school, or a middle school for their daughter, and were just not very impressed with the options that they had there. And charter schools in Arizona had recently become a possibility, and they decided to give it a shot. And they had all sorts of ideas on how to create this program that would give students opportunities that just were not available at the time, and mix the best of Asian and European and other world-class educational styles and programs with, with an American kind of emphasis on individual discovery and research and expression. So in, so in, so that was 1998, they opened Basis Tucson. That went well enough that in 2003, they opened Basis Scottsdale. And that, both of those two schools continued to grow for the next seven years until they opened their third school, Basis Aura Valley, at the insistence of Dr. Craig Barrett, who is the CEO of Intel, the former CEO of Intel Corporation, who ended up becoming the chairman of the Board of Basis Schools, Inc. And so at Intel, Dr. Barrett had become an expert on replication of chips and other technology, and he came to Basis and said, you guys need to replicate too. And so since then, we've been on a, on a rapid expansion path. We've opened three or four schools every year since 2010. In 2013, we opened our first K through 4 program in Tucson, and, and will be continuing that, that younger grades program here in Goodyear so that, so that eventually we have a complete K-12 program. So what makes Basis different? What makes this, our programs possible? Number one is teachers who are experts in their fields. Our math teachers have math degrees, our science teachers have science degrees, and our history teachers have history degrees. That allows them to bring a real passion for their subjects to our students and allow the students to dive as deep as they want into any of their classes. So that's really powerful. High expectations is the second thing. We expect a lot of our students because we know they can do it. They partner with our teachers to, you know, in classes to, to ensure that they reach their highest potential and are not held back by state standards or by any kind of standardized testing. They just go to the highest level that they possibly can, and it's pretty amazing to watch. And number three is emphasis on individual student responsibility. And that's kind of a hard-to-quantify thing, but it's, we believe it's really important and a key part of our success. And what that means is, in practice, is from a young age, we train our kids to be self-reliant and to take responsibility for their own learning. They, our teachers don't, they, they give the kids free rein to, to control their own path, their own path for learning. They have, you know, we don't, we don't post our homework assignments online because we want our students to be paying attention in class and learn how to organize their thoughts and take notes and, and really gain as much study skills as they possibly can. And, and so those three things together are what, what make Basis, Basis. And the last two in particular come together in the 12th grade senior research project, which is, which is really an amazing, unique thing that we offer, where students are, have the, the opportunity to take the entire 12th grade to do, to work on, on high-level, post-AP college-level, sometimes graduate-level courses, including vector calculus and category theory, and after that, move on to completely independent research projects under the mentorship of our faculty and outside faculty. And they've done everything from researching ancient languages to history projects and military strategy and cancer research, and, and all that is, really trains, trains the students to, it gives them the experience in doing something completely independent and producing something of real value. So how does Basis perform? Our high schools have been ranked consistently in the top 10 in the United States since 2010. Basis Scottsdale, this year has ranked the second-best high school in the United States. And we, we look forward to the day when we have 10 of the top 10 schools. We're still working towards that. On the PISA exam, which is an international test of 15-year-olds' critical thinking and problem-solving ability, we recently outperformed every economy in the world that took the exam, including Shanghai, China, which had been the top performer. And so that was, that was great to see. We also had four out of the 20 Flynn Scholars in Arizona this year from our Basis Schools. And that was out of, out of only fewer than 200 Basis graduates. Four of them ended up becoming Flynn Scholars. So what will Basis Goodyear look like? You've seen our renderings, this is kind of the style that the building will be in. It's still under design with our architects, and we're going to be combining our, what you see here at the top is our typical K-6 building, at the bottom is our typical building for grades 5 through 12. We'll be actually combining these into one building for the first time, and so our architects are still working on exactly what that's going to look like. But it's still going to have the kind of modern minimalist feel that you see here. So that's it. Here's my contact information, which I believe you all have, and I'll take questions now if you have any.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the briefing. Okay, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak? All right. Would I, could I please have a motion and a second to approve the purchase agreement for 11-acre parcel at the intersection of West Sherman Street and West Goodyear Boulevard, Goodyear, Arizona?
Madam Mayor, can we, we add to that motion contingent on the finalization of the deed of trust and the legal descriptions? Just add that language to the motion. Just need to add language to the motion you just stated, saying it's contingent upon the finalization of the deed of trust and the legal descriptions, since those are the two documents we have not completed.
All right, would the city clerk please write that down and repeat what he said,
Approve purchase agreement for an 11-acre parcel at the intersection of West Sherman Street and West Goodyear Boulevard North, Goodyear, Arizona, contingent upon the finalization of the deed of trust and the legal descriptions.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion and a second? Please vote now.
We don't have a vote.
There's on the screen. Is everybody, it's on the screen. Does everybody have, no, she doesn't have it on the screen.
You want to do the motion, and then if you want to have discussion?
I'm sorry, what?
You're just doing the motion at this time, and then you can have discussion?
I asked for a motion. I did. All right, a motion?
It's up.
Okay.
It's up.
All right, a motion, that was just up. A motion by Councilman Osborne, a second by Councilman Stip. And so, open for council discussion. Thank you. It's finally just worked this time.
Mine that still doesn't work.
All right, we still have one that didn't work.
The vote won't come up yet.
All right.
Mine's up. Oh, you started the vote.
Sorry for this mishap, but we're having some technical problems tonight. So can I just repeat this and the vote again?
I think we're at the discussion. We can proceed with discussion.
All right, let me ask him, okay. All right, so open for discussion, Councilwoman Lortano.
Oh, I was going to go last.
I mean, what? You want to go last? Okay. Open for discussion. Who else wants to start first?
I have some questions if I may.
Councilmember Campbell?
Mr. City Attorney, I have some questions from, for engineering regarding the stoplights. Is this appropriate to ask this question at this time?
Do you have questions regarding...
There's such an echo, we can hardly, we cannot understand what y'all are saying to us.
I'm with you.
And I sent an email to the clerk saying, can they do something about this terrible echo in this room? Because we cannot hear you.
It's going to echo out here too, I think. Is that, you're having trouble out there? I mean...
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so my question is, for engineering, is we're going to put an additional stoplight. We have one stoplight up now on Yuma Road and Goodyear Boulevard, which is one we now use to go into and out of Desert Spring, I mean Desert Edge High School. So we're going to put one at the Y when we build in Goodyear Boulevard North. And what concerns me is, have we done a traffic count now so we know how many cars use that Goodyear Boulevard West now before we put another traffic light? Because to me, if we've got a light here and a light here, and kids are coming in, and parents are coming in here, and coming in here, they're going to back up onto Yuma Road. So that's what I'm concerned about, and I'd like to know what the traffic count is.
We, we do not have a traffic count at this point. We do have observed the Desert Edge activity, and it does handle the current activity. The Basis site, as is planned right now, and early discussions have indicated that the traffic flow is self-contained on their property. If in the event that they are, they experience problems with, with queuing, that we feel that there's enough storage onsite or on West Sherman to accommodate that. But this is all subject to the final details that we're going to negotiate. As far as the timing of the signals, they will be, we put them into the plan so that they are there if needed. We think eventually the traffic signal at West Sherman will be necessary. It may not be necessary with the first phase of their building. So we will monitor the traffic, traffic patterns throughout the first phase of the process and bring in the signal at the appropriate time when needed.
Okay, so we're just going to use the, the existing signal for now?
The existing signal on Yuma?
Right.
Is going to be possibly reconfigured somewhat to align with the new geometrics, but it will be, continue to be used.
Are we going to have fiber optic up there so that we can time those together? Because I don't want to have another conversation with traffic saying we can't time them.
There will be ability to, to time those signals to coordinate that.
Okay. And you think we'll get a traffic count before this is final?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you very much. Because that's one of the concerns that so many of our schools do have, that the ingress and egress is, is, does not work. And I want to talk about it early on so we can try to mitigate some of that concern, because when you're trying to get everybody in at once, it's a busy time.
We see that all throughout the city. That's a prime concern to us.
Okay.
We'll be working with police and also traffic to deal with.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor? Pizzillo?
First, I appreciate quality education as an adjunct professor at several of the universities. I realize how important it is to have quality of education. With that being said, my concern with the project, and it's been consistent from the start, from the original vote, is the percentage of costs being borne by the city for the project. Personally, I think a larger percentage should be picked up by Basis. And as a result of that, I know I'm in the minority, but I will be voting no for the project.
Councilman Osborne?
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, I just would like to tell you that for the last seven and a half years that I've been on this council, and the six years prior to that, and even beyond that, our, our city has been looking for education, top-notch education, higher education, whatever we can, can attain in our city, we've been looking. And we've been trying for many years to bring it together, and, and something just always didn't happen. But we were prepared. And I feel like we're finally at that, that point that we are investing in infrastructure for education, but it's, it's a good deal of money. And the good thing that I feel about it is that we are looking at this as an economic driver. And partial funding for this is taking money from one economic driver to put it into this one. And over the years, we have spent a lot of money on infrastructure and deals for economic-driven industries. But to me, education deserves that same kind of investment and that same kind of commitment by the city. And I know that as our city grows, we have to look at the workforce, we have to develop the careers that are going to be needed for the corporations and the industries that, that we have brought to the city. So you may be a K through 12, and that's not quite higher education, but it's top-notch education, and I, and I appreciate that. I also believe that with this investment, we will also see the higher education that we've been waiting for. And, and it's into a part of our city that will cause density, it will be an area that we've been longing for and, and we've been waiting for, and it just never was quite the right time. And so I'm happy that you're here. I look forward to a sign that says Basis Goodyear, not Basis West Valley, but Basis Goodyear. I, I will, you know, put that little jab in there, but I appreciate it. And, and I look forward also to, I know that you have 17 schools, and to... And, and I look forward also to, I know that you have 17 schools, and two have been in the top schools in, in the nation. I'm looking forward to Basis Goodyear to being one of those. Thank you.
Good. Councilman Stip, thank you. Councilman Osborne?
You know, I, I shared very initially a lot of the concerns that the vice mayor did about the amount of shared responsibility and financial responsibility toward the project. And I, too, the only way to, to really rectify this is, is the second item that is part of this agenda is, is the funding mechanism, and the fact that we have discussed, you know, holding off on another theoretical economic engine to, and that one was theoretical as opposed to the one that's before us that is real. And that helps get me over the, the equity issue. But secondarily to that, and, and I think more importantly, is the conversation that I had last week with our finance director, Larry Lang, who pointed out that we have, we have had this project to repair these roads and put in this, these traffic lights for a number of years. We had always envisioned that we were going to be doing something with this 100-acre parcel that we have. And, and the only reason that we're really talking about the additional infrastructure is that we started back up the SAT site, and that brought in additional costs to the project that weren't necessarily there. And that if Basis wasn't coming in, we would still be making that investment in the, in the next year or so. And, so I think regardless of the project itself, the investment in that area was, was financially necessary. So now you get through all the finance stuff, and we get down to the nitty-gritty, and we have Basis here. And I, while I will never be as enthusiastic as Councilmember Lortano is going to be about it, just simply because it's out of my nature, I am very happy that we are able to bring a very high-quality school into our community, which is, we pride ourselves on being a high-quality community, and this is just another, another feather in our cap, so to speak, that, that makes it that way. And, and I'll be very proud and honored to have, to have you in our, in our community. So thanks for choosing us.
Councilman Lortano?
Everyone up here knows that I pretty much have a soapbox when it comes to this issue, and, and I've probably berated them all about how, how much I, I care about this, and they're probably tired of letting me hear about this. But my view is, when we're talking about the investment, we're investing in our future and our kids' future, and that's what this is. We hear one of the most top issues right now is education, K through 12 education, and getting those children and young adults ready for college. And right now, many schools, they're not, they're not cutting it, unfortunately. And I think bringing your school here not only lifts our community up, it helps lifts our other schools up, and get those students ready so that when they're in college, they're not having to take the remedial math or the remedial algebra. I also teach part-time as an adjunct at a community college, and I see some of the students, and I see that they're not ready for school. And when I look at your curriculum, I look at the requirement for AP classes and what you've said, and that you're the number-two school in the country is Scottsdale. I see just a very bright future for our children and our businesses. And I think that's one thing that we need to always keep in mind, that businesses are going to locate, they're going to bring, companies and corporations are going to come places where there are good schools. If you don't have these high-quality schools, and I'm looking to relocate my Fortune 500 company, I, I'm going to look at Goodyear now and say, "They've got a great, wonderful school system there. They've got a Basis school." And my employees and my executives are going to want to send their children there, because it is such a high-level school. It's basically investing in the future. The money, it is a lot of money, and not going to, I don't think we, nobody disagrees that it is a lot of money there. But when we look at what we're getting for our money, not only is it infrastructure to bring your school here and that high level of education, but it's also going to help, it's a university parcel. We've looked for years to partner with a university over there, which would be a great educational partner. There's other opportunities there. It's our land, that land around there. So we're, we're investing in ourselves and bringing Basis in. We are investing in our families, our future, and our community, and our state. So as a mother of two children, if I can get on the waiting list, you might be seeing my children there. So, you know, I, I think it's just an absolutely wonderful school, and I cannot sing your praises high enough. So obviously, I'm going to be voting for it.
Well, it's back to the mayor. I want to thank you very much, counsel, for considering this. I have to tell you, from the moment that I was able to visit your school and spend some time in the classrooms, and, and really saw the teaching in action, I, I was really impressed. I saw a lot of creativity. I also saw a lot of classroom participation, and you could tell the students had studied, they knew their subject matter, and they wanted to give not only their opinion, but they were very competitive on wanting to be the one to, to repeat the answer. I remember the blackboards when they had them on, and they were in the math room, and they wanted acceptance from the teacher, and it was, it was very inspiring. And then talking to some of the other mayors around in Maricopa schools, that, hearing the positive reinforcement that they were giving to me about a Basis school. So I was really looking forward, and so I was looking forward for the council to hear about it. Some of them were very familiar, some were not. So we're so pleased with it. But I'm also, like Councilman Stip, we have needed to do the infrastructure for that city center area for a long time. And I want it to be known that there is still that other acreage left, but there is still self-contained, that 40 acres. So when we talk about this property, there are going to be people listening tonight and say, "Oh, we're not going to City Hall now." We had a number of 25, 28 citizens on a committee that I chaired for years to do the specific area plan for the city center 40 acres. So I just want those people to know, that is, you know, that is still alive. It may look a little different the next time around, but it's still alive. And we think that this will really reinvent it all. And this is going to bring us companies to the, to that area that we're looking at before but really didn't plant themselves. And so we're looking forward to building also a facility that the citizens will be able to enjoy and, and later on, and that's, that's, that's on our CIP. So again, gentlemen, thank you very much for coming tonight. So I'm going to ask you to cast your vote, and it just went out. This is...
I forgot about that.
Yeah. All right, is everybody's screen there?
Wait, mine's connecting. I forgot.
I'm sorry, they went out again, so...
I'm good.
All right, so I'm asking everybody to cast your vote. So, did you get it?
I want to vote on this one.
I know you do want to vote on this one.
Her choice is leave.
Join, hit join again.
No, it's leave.
It's amazing that last week, the first night, it worked perfectly. Not a problem. But tonight doesn't seem to be doing that. I guess one week away, that does it. You're right.
Yeah, they got to retrain us.
Did you vote?
Yep.
I did.
Okay, so if you can see on the screen, would the city clerk please announce?
Passes 6-1.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, the second item we have is the authorization of fund transfer. I believe when I went through the infrastructure requirements, I neglected to mention the, the projected project costs on this for the offsite infrastructure that benefits not only the Basis site, but as many of you referenced, the adjacent city-owned land. But the estimated cost right now is $5.5 million. There's $2.5 million currently in the CIP program for offsite infrastructure in this area. So the second action item we have this evening will be authorizing the fund transfers to cover the offsite, offsite infrastructure related to this project.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion in a second? I've heard a motion from Sherry Lortano, and a second from Councilman Osborne, open for council discussion. Vice Mayor Fazillo?
I appreciate, oh, I appreciate what Larry did to come up, again, funding, since we've approved the school. Again, welcome. I appreciate the school, again, for higher education. As I mentioned earlier, my problem was always the, the percentage that the city was paying towards this, was that I appreciate we're using another economic development as far as the funding. It's also my understanding that the cash from the replacement equipment, it may be a backstop but will not be drained, is, I guess, let me bring Larry up, make sure I get all this clear. Couple of questions first, Larry. First, we're using...
Could you announce who you asked up? Larry Lang, what, Director of Finance?
Yes. Larry Lang, Director of Finance.
Yes.
The water and the sewer money being used for the actual project itself ties into the nature of the construction that we're going to be doing. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. There are improvements, putting the sewer in there, water getting looped, and then also with the movement of the SAT site, all of those. Now, those costs, as proposed in this, are coming from cash balances that we had available that were not appropriated for other purposes, so it will not affect any other projects in our water and sewer activity this year.
Is it fair to say there's a nexus between those funds and the projects itself?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And then the second thing is, is because we're moving future economic development projects, there's no cash for that, but in appropriation. We've got the cash in the actual replacement fund as a backstop but will not be used, if anything has to be touched as far as excess cash at the end of the year. That, that itself fund will be whole as we move forward with our replacement, correct?
That is correct. That will be whole. It's the capital improvement plan in fiscal years 16 and 17 that will provide the actual appropriation to do this.
Appropriation for that. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Stip?
You know, I, I mentioned it earlier. I'm, I'm very happy that despite, maybe not despite the right word, but with plenty of options available on the table that we, you know, came to, came to this conclusion to utilize funds for future projects that we think might come and actually use it for a project that's actually here. It's been a while since we've, since we've done something like that. We're usually sticking our neck out to, to try to, you know, stretch a little bit, and, and you can't get anywhere if you don't lean forward. But I, I think when we're talking about this kind of money, that was a little too far to lean forward. So I'm very happy that, that we, we had this. The other thing that this does that we, that we don't have necessarily in the information is this also allows us for future opportunities, should they come along at a later date, for something else. And it doesn't completely handcuff us from a, a funding perspective, and, and I like the, the ability to have that flexibility, whether it be a year, or three, or five years down the road. It does provide us the flexibility to move forward without affecting anything that our citizens have today, and it doesn't take away from their, from their future. So I appreciate that opportunity as well. So thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so we're at this time. Please cast your vote.
Passes 6-1.
Thank you very much. So before I adjourn the meeting, just so you know, I'm going to be adjourning this special meeting, and then we're going to go on work sessions. So I just want to make sure, before I do that, if we're going to take a break, I'll, I'll, I'll bring the, the work session to order, and then you can take a break. Does somebody need a break before?
Yeah.
Yes? Yes, okay.